Good afternoon, everyone. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum?
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell. Counselor Siomo. Counselor Asabi George. Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Jackson. Counselor Lamatina. Counselor Linehan. Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley.
Present.
Counselor Presley. Counselor Wu.
Present.
And Counselor Zachem. Madam President, we have a forum.
Thank you. Welcome to the I N L chamber, everyone. We have two special presentations today. Before that, we want to get started with the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. So I'd ask everyone at this time to please stand. Counselor O'Malley will introduce our clergy for today, and then please remain standing after the invocation, and Counselor O'Malley will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Counselor?
Thank you, Madam President, and good afternoon, colleagues. For my final clergy pick, I've asked someone who's become a great friend to me over the last year. Father John Carroll is the pastor of St. John Chrysostom's Church in West Roxbury, which is my parish. I know many of you have been there. If you haven't, you are welcome. It's a wonderful, thriving, small, terrific, spiritual community. Father John first joined St. John's back in June of last year. He's coming up on his one-year anniversary, and he really encapsulates the spirit of our church. He's done some terrific events, like a simple supper during Lent. He even dragooned me into dressing as the Easter Bunny for the post-Easter service this year, and he just really gets it. He's got roots in this community, in this city. He grew up in Lynn, but he spent many years as the chaplain of Mass General Hospital and Beth Israel deaconess. He's been in parishes all over New England, and particularly in Massachusetts, in Woburn, Marlboro, and Lexington. He attended LaSalle University and the University of Toronto, and he was one of the few trained and certified chaplains in Boston during the 80s and 90s, really at the apex of the AIDS crisis. And he's just helped a tremendous number of people, countless people, throughout this city in New England, and he's really doing a phenomenal job. And I'm so delighted that he's agreed to open our meeting today with a prayer. So please join me in welcoming Father John Carroll.
Seems like I should be running for something after that introduction, huh? Nice to be with all of you. Shall we pray? Lord, you have entrusted us as stewards of your creation. Please gut our hearts as we make decisions serving your people. Open our minds so that we may receive your eternal wisdom. Open our spirits so that we may know your leading and guidance. And open our hearts so that we may receive your wonderful love. Help us to understand that we can't always walk in the shoes of others, but in listening to them, we can open ourselves to their needs. We seek you first and all that what we do together, that we may be always mindful of the service we perform and help us not to get in the way of your plan. The people put us here to help and let us not disappoint them. We ask us to better your creation and services that we render. From the very beginning, we heard the slogans, "One nation under God, and again in God we trust." Help us to realize that it is only in serving one another we understand true leadership, knowing fully that the God of our understanding is foremost the leader of this assembly. Help us to be inclusive in our awareness of all, whether it be race, gender, orientation, or religion. It is not what we believe, it is about who we are and under your protection. May your blessing be on us as we work for the common good. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you very much, Counselor O'Malley and Father. Very beautiful message this morning. Before we move on to formal business, we have two special presentations, so I'd like to invite up Counselor Campbell and Counselor McCarthy for the first.
Yeah, can I have you guys come up here and not be out there? EMS, come on up. This isn't about us, it's about you. Thank you, Madam President. Be shy. Come on, come on.
There's no shy guys, though.
So Counselor McCarthy and I are up here to establish in honor National EMS Week. I am the Chair of Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Counselor McCarthy is the Vice Chair. And before we read the proclamation, I just want to acknowledge the hard work that Chief Hooley and his team, and obviously, they're not all with us here today, the hard work they do every day in serving the city of Boston and saving lives. They're on the front line, and they often go unrecognized. I was at a meeting this morning at BPD, and most of my conversations tend to be with the Fire Department or BPD, but I made it intentional that more of those conversations be with Chief Hooley to acknowledge the work that you do. Before we read the proclamation, I want Counselor McCarthy to also say a few words, but thank you for being here. Thank you for all you do. Thank you to your families as well that support you every day in the work.
Thank you, Counselor. I'll be very brief. You know, I've said to Chief Hooley a bunch of times, I think that EMS is really the most underrated department we have in the city. I think they are, they're the light-hitting shortstop, you know? Because you only notice them when the ball rolls through their legs, and it very rarely rolls through their legs because they are a clutch part of our lineup in the city of Boston, and they're so important. And you really only know how important they are is when you see, you know, you're on the stretcher, or a loved one is on the stretcher. So for me, personally, to them, I want to thank them so much as being such an integral part of the safety and fabric of our city.
So today, the proclamation reads, "Whereas Boston Emergency Medical Services is a vital public safety and public health service since its inception in 1877, and Boston EMS is the city's municipal emergency medical service, and along with the Boston Fire and Police Department, responds to 911 calls. And whereas Boston EMS responds to more than 108,000 incidents throughout the city of Boston's 911 emergency system, providing more than 78,000 transports annually. And whereas services provided 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and they continually surpass their response time goals. And whereas the professional women and men of Boston EMS serve the citizens of and the visitors to this city with compassion and distinction, earning them an international reputation for excellence in their field. And whereas Boston EMS is the critical link between public health and public safety, where patient interaction skills that go beyond quality medical care to provide reassurance, information, and coordination with hospitals that define truly integrated pre-hospital care. And whereas it is hereby appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of all that you do, we are designating EMS Week now. We do proclaim May 15th through May 21st, 2016, to be National EMS Week." Thank you for having me.
Really, just on behalf of all the men and women at Boston EMS, those that are serving now, those that have, you know, served in the past, and for recruit classes we have coming on, so, thank you very much. We've enjoyed tremendous support from this body, from the council, and, you know, we just, we want to live up to it. We want to, we want to continue to make you proud. And thank you very much, both councils, for your kind words, and especially for remembering our families, because sometimes, you know, the caregivers, we have to remember to take care of our own, too. So that was, that was a very nice touch. Thank you, Bob. Thank you.
Come closer, come in. Come on, ladies. Here we go.
I love the ladies.
Thank you again very much to our fine women and men of Boston EMS.
Thank you, President Wu. Today, I want to recognize Jaclyn Lamont and Maddie Decola for the incredible work they have done in the photo series, "Now You See Me," a celebration of courageous kids. These photos, some of which are displayed around the council chamber, show the eyes of children and adult survivors who have bravely told their stories of abuse to law enforcement agencies. These powerful images tell stories of triumph. They are celebrations of the strength and courage and resilience of these children. I also want to take this opportunity to thank every school nurse, teacher, religious leader, neighbor, police officer, coach, advocate, EMT and paramedic, and friend who supported these victims of child abuse and have helped them find the strength to seek justice. And a special thank you to Jackie and Maddie. I am proud today to present you both with citations from the Boston City Council. They're presenting Jackie and Maddie with a citation that reads, "In recognition of their contribution to the Now You See Me series that shares the stories of many courageous kids who have experienced trauma, and for their dedication to helping that their stories be heard." And very quickly, two words of encouragement from the first time that I met Jackie and Maddie that were sitting on my chair and the chair next to me, I swiped that one as well, from Yvonne that is 19 years old, quote, "You are the master of your future. Don't let someone take your power away." And from Luna, who is 12, "I would tell another kid not to give up, even when it hurts. At that moment, hard times come and leave, but great times come and stay. Remember, you are a strong person." Thank you, Jackie and Maddie.
Thank you so much for having us here today. Thank you so much, Counselor Asabi George. And I want to thank my colleagues who came with me. There's prosecutors from our Child Protection Unit over there, and, so, we're from the Suffolk DA's Office Child Protection Unit in Children's Advocacy Center. And I'll be brief, but when I talk about child abuse, I can't help but be as forceful as I can about how much we need to talk about it. So this project, Now You See, a celebration of courageous kids, is the collection of eyes and words of real kids and adult survivors from Suffolk County who have been abused. Most of them have been sexually abused, physically abused, exploited. The things they've been through, you know, we can't imagine, but the thing is that this is the smallest, smallest example of how many are actually out there. We have 120 participants in this project. We could have thousands, because the Children's Advocacy Center in our unit, we review about 1,600 cases per year. That's just Suffolk County. That shows how prevalent child abuse is. How do you talk about it with the public? It's, it's really hard. So we hope this project will allow the public to celebrate the courage of these kids with us, and that's why we are taking these pictures anywhere that will have us and asking people to have their picture taken with the picture, to show that you support the kids in the project and you support all survivors of child, excuse me, of child abuse. The participants are thrilled when they see you with their picture. So after each exhibit that we do, I show the kids or the adult survivors the pictures that we've taken, and they are so proud and so grateful. So after today, I will be showing the seven or eight participants that are here with us today. I'll be showing them all of you with them, and they're going to be very excited about that. So thank you so much for having us. I did bring some materials about the project. If anyone knows anyone who'd like to hold one of the pictures or keep it in their office for a week, if anyone knows Tom Brady and knows how we can get him to hold one, let me know. And, but you all are just as important as Tom Brady. So I would, I would love to have any of you stand with the picture. So thank you so much.
Thank you. And that being said, if you'd like to take a picture that's behind you and bring it up, we're going to do a group photo holding some of these photos.
Thank you again, Counselor Asabi George, and our many advocates and warriors for justice So we'll move on to formal business, starting with the approval of the minutes from last week. Are there any objections to, or edits, or amendments to the minutes of last week? Seeing and hearing none, the minutes stand approved. And now communications from His Honor, the Mayor, Madam Clerk.
Oh, yes.
Great, thank you. You have already done this, but for the record, would you please note that Counselor Siomo and Counselor Presley are present as well? And now communications from His Honor, the Mayor.
Thank you, Madam President. Docket number 0734, Message and Ordinance Amending CBC Ordinances, Amendments to Section 12-3.5 of Chapter 12 of the City of Boston Municipal Code, Extending the Senior Citizen Property Tax Workoff Abatement for a Period of Five Years and Making Changes to Program Qualifications filed in the City Clerk's Office on May 16, 2016.
Docket number 0734 will be assigned to the Committee on Government Operations.
Docket number 0735, Message and Order for the Confirmation of the Reappointment of David Marr as a Member of the Zoning Commission for a Term Ending on May 1, 2017.
And Madam Clerk, would you please read the next docket with it as well?
Thank you. Docket number 0736, Message and Order for the Confirmation of the Reappointment of Jay Hurley as a Member of the Zoning Commission for a Term Ending May 1, 2019.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Planning and Development, Counselor Linehan.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to suspend the rules and confirm these two members. David M. Marr has been with the Zoning Commission since, I think it was 2012, and Jay Hurley since 2003. So these are reappointments and ones that I totally support and hope my members would suspend and pass here today. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Linehan. Would anyone else like to comment on this matter? So everyone noting for the public audience that suspension of the rules requires unanimous consent, so hearing no objection. Counselor Linehan, at this point, moves for suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0735 for the confirmation of David Marr's reappointment to the Zoning Commission. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Docket 0735 has passed, and David Marr has been confirmed. Counselor Linehan moves for suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0736, Confirmation of Jay Hurley's reappointment to the Zoning Commission. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Docket 0736 has passed, and Jay Hurley has been confirmed.
Docket number 0737, Message and Order for the Confirmation of the Appointment of Dr. Joseph Betancourt as a Member of the Boston Public Health Commission's Board of Health for a Term Ending January 1, 2018.
Chair recognizes Chair of the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities, Counselor Presley.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to ask for a suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0737. Unlike Mr. Marr and Mr. Hurley, for whom you have resumes, I did not provide one, so I'll just extract some things from his illustrious bio for your consideration. Dr. Joseph Betancourt has a distinguished career focused on racial and ethnic disparities in healthcare and has been serving as a member of the Boston Public Health Commission's Board of Health since 2009. Dr. Betancourt is a Director of the Disparity Solutions Center at Mass General Hospital and an Assistant Professor of Medicine at Harvard Medical School. His primary research focuses on cross-cultural medicine, minority recruitment into health professions, and minority health policy research. Dr. Betancourt was a member of the Massachusetts State Committee on Racial and Ethnic Disparities and served also on the BPHC Committee on Racial and Ethnic Disparities. He currently co-chairs the Massachusetts General Hospital Committee on Racial Ethnic Disparities and the Harvard Medical School Cross-Cultural Care Committee. Say that fast five times. He was first appointed to the Board of Health in 2009 to finish out an unexpired term, and then was reappointed to two subsequent terms, both in 2010 and 2013. As a board member, Dr. Betancourt has contributed to the progress and leadership in promoting the health and well-being of all Boston residents, particularly those who are most vulnerable. I ask that you both to reaffirm his appointment today, again, asking for suspension of the rules and passage. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Presley. At this point, Counselor Presley moves for suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0737 for the confirmation of Dr. Joseph Betancourt to the Boston Public Health Commission's Board of Health. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Docket 0737 has passed, and Dr. Betancourt has been confirmed. Reports of public officers and others, Madam Clerk.
Docket number 0738, Communication from Counselor Campbell Regarding the Boston Police Department's Body worn Camera Pilot Program Community Meeting.
Chair recognizes Counselor Campbell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Clerk. So I rise to suspend Rule 34 in order to have a hearing, a follow-up hearing on the Body Camera Pilot Program on June 8th, which is a Wednesday. This is an exception to the rule. It's, it's not a normal occurrence in a reason I'm...
Counselor, do you, so that, that item is actually docket 0...
Never mind.
743.
Going back.
Okay, we can, we can address it now if you'd like, but would you like to speak on the, your letter about the Body Camera Program?
So, thank you. I will stand again soon. So I rise, actually, just to call your attention to a letter that I wrote to Commissioner Evans about the pilot program, the Body worn Pilot Program, and the community meetings that we had regarding those, that program. We had three community meetings. One was in Dorchester, one was in Charlestown, the other one in Rosendale. I have to thank Counselor Nisa Asabi George, Counselor Lamatina, Counselor McCarthy for co-facilitating those meetings with me. This letter is simply an opportunity for the committee to give the Commissioner feedback based on what we've heard, with the hopes that he actually takes this information, incorporates it into his policy discussions with the social justice task force, with the unions, as they develop a policy program for the body cameras. So I call your attention to that. I want to thank my colleagues for their efforts in this regard. I want to thank them for their support on this issue, and I will continue to keep this council, as well as the public, abreast of all we're doing related to the pilot program. And then I will stand again on the other matter later today. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Campbell. And yes, we'll be talking more on body cameras very soon. Moving on, Madam Clerk, oh, sorry, docket 0738 will be placed on file.
Would you like me to read docket 0739?
Yes, the next four together, please.
Docket 0739, Notice as you see from the City Clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding actions taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the City Council at its meeting of April 6, 2016. Docket number 0740, Notice as you see from the City Clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding actions taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the City Council at its meeting of April 27, 2016. Docket number 0741, Notice as you see from the mayor of the appointment of Francis Doyle as chairperson of the Boston Public Health Commission's Board of Health. And docket number 0742, Notice as you see from the mayor of the appointment of Ben Bradley as a Member of the Boston Public Library Board of Trustees for a Term Expiring May 1, 2018.
Dockets numbers 0739 through 0742 will be placed on file. Reports of committees, Madam Clerk.
Docket number 0533, The Committee on Ways and Means to which was referred on April 13, 2016. Docket number 0533, Message and Order approving appropriation of $25,143,163 for the purpose of paying the costs associated with window/door replacement projects at the following schools: Young Achievers, Science and Math, K through 8, Community Academy of Science and Health, Tech Boston Academy, Ellis School, McKay, K through 8, Hurley School, and Sumner School. Submit your report recommending the order ought to receive its first reading and be assigned for further action.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, Counselor Siomo.
Thank you, Madam President. We held a hearing on May 12. Testimony was provided by Carlton Jones from the Capital and Facilities Management Department as for BPS, and Brian McLaughlin, the Assistant Director of Operations from Capital Construction Division. BPS submitted a statement of interest in February of 2015 to the Mass School Building Authority, listing and explaining the various school deficiencies submitted under priority 5, and this is through the accelerated repair program. On June 24, this body appropriated $600,000 for the feasibility study in schematic design for the, the projects, and this project is, encompasses 3,000 windows from the aforementioned schools: Young Achievers, Community Academy of Science and Health, Tech Boston Academy, Ellis School, McKay, K through 8, Hurley School, and Sumner School. The MSBA's Board of Directors approved the schematic design and pledged their financial commitment and participation. The district and the MSBA then entered into a project... The district and the MSBA then entered into a project funding agreement contingent upon the city to secure community authorization and financial support. It was reported that 3,000 windows will be replaced with the construction timeline beginning this coming fall and ending before the 2017 school year. The MSBA will continue to monitor the projects to ensure they are on track, and they will perform the final audit to determine the total grant amounts and make the final payment. It has been reported that the city will use these funds towards the total cost of the project, which will include some masonry work in addition to the installation of the windows. The MSBA grant will cover approximately $16 million, representing 65% total reimbursement to the city after we appropriate the $25 million. So this matter requires two votes, and I ask that we take that first vote today and sign for further action. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Siomo. Would anyone like to speak on this matter? Okay, at this time, Counselor Siomo moves for the first reading and vote on docket 0533, which is also required to have a roll call vote. If it passes, we will address it again after the two weeks have passed for the second required vote. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Docket number 0533, Counselor Baker. Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Campbell. Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Siomo. Counselor Siomo, yes. Counselor Asabi George. Counselor Asabi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Jackson. Counselor Jackson, yes. And Counselor Flaherty, yes, I'm sorry. Counselor Lamatina. Counselor Lamatina, yes. Counselor Linehan. Counselor Linehan, yes. Counselor McCarthy. Counselor McCarthy, yes. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor O'Malley, yes. Counselor Presley. Counselor Presley, yes. Counselor Wu.
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. And Counselor Zachem. Counselor Zachem, yes. Madam President, docket number 0533 has received first reading.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Docket 0533 has received a unanimous first reading and will be assigned to further action.
Docket number 0504, the Committee on Government Operations, to which was referred on April 6, 2016. Docket number 0504, an ordinance amending CBC Section 16-26.4 Regulation on Construction Hours and 18-1.19.2B Saturday Permits. Committe your report recommending the ordinance ought to pass.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, Counselor Flaherty.
Thank you, Madam President. This is truly a quality-of-life issue, and also want to thank the written testimony received from our colleague, City Council Josh Zachem, pertaining to this issue. This ordinance would amend the regulation of off-hour construction permits by requiring $100 fee per day outside the current allowable hours, which it's weekdays from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. This would address the current inequities in the permitting process as the existing regulation requires to a flat fee of $100 regardless of how many days of work is taking place in violation of the ordinance. So if someone got a permit and the project was to last, say, a week or 10 days, and every day they started early and went late, they would only, under the previous ordinance, they would only get fined $100. So the price of doing business would say to the contractor, just come in early, come in late, just get the job done, I'll pay the extra $100. So this actually will allow the city to fine them per occurrence. So if they come in early on Monday or any day that week while the permit is valid, they'll be fined. So the Inspection Service Department will continue to oversee the construction permit process and approve only those off-hour permits where the work is deemed necessary. At a hearing last Friday, we had Commissioner Buddy Christopher in. He expressed the department's commitment to their Office of Neighborhood Services as well as our offices because we get the phone calls. We get the calls from constituents when work is starting early or going late. So residents had led the effort and encouraged, are encouraged to report any violation to the 311 service, and happy to say that the penalties will be $300 per offense. So we're increasing the fines from 100 to 300. And at this time, I'm recommending that this matter ought to pass. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Zachem, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to briefly add a couple comments onto this, and I thank Counselor Flaherty for shepherding this important ordinance through, you know, regularly, this is probably one of the top concerns I hear from residents, whether it's permitted or unpermitted work happening at off-hours, keeping people up in the mornings, on the weekends, and I think it's not just an issue of fairness but of making our enforcement, our Inspection Services Department, have more teeth when they go out there and issue violations. Commissioner Christopher and his team have been incredibly responsive when we do get calls. I mean, I had one last weekend, you know, I contacted the commission, and I think within an hour, they had issued a stop work order and had inspectors out there. But that's not enough. We need to support them with legislation that really gives these rules the teeth when it's just $100 to basically go off-hours for months at a time. That's not fair, I think, to our residents, to our city, certainly not to the inspectors who are sending out there to enforce these rules, and don't feel they're fully backed up by the ordinances and by the laws of the city. So I certainly will be voting in favor of this. I urge all of you to join us as well, and I thank you again, Counselor Flaherty, for your work on this.
Thank you, Counselor Zachem. This time, Counselor Flaherty moves for acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0504. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Docket 0504 has passed. Matters recently heard for possible action, and Madam Clerk, would you please read the first three dockets together?
Thank you, Madam President. Docket number 0525 through 0532, orders for the FY17 operating budget including annual appropriation and tax order, annual appropriation for the school department, and appropriation for other post-employment benefits known as OPEB. Docket's number 0534 through 0543, orders for the FY17 capital budget including loan orders and lease and purchase agreements. Docket number 0549, message and order authorizing the Inspection Services Department Animal Control Unit to reestablish in accordance with general laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E 1/2, a revolving fund to accept from that fund up to a maximum of $300,000 to fund fiscal year 2017 to reimburse for administrative costs to those agencies, which enforce CBC's Chapter 16, Section 1.9 and 1.9B, and for costs associated with licensing and registration. And docket number 050... I'm sorry. You asked me to do the first three.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Does the Chair want to speak on this? Okay, docket 0525 through 0532, 0534 through 0543, and 0549 will remain in the Committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 0509, order for hearing regarding traffic calming measures and the Vision Zero Boston Program.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Parks, Recreation and Transportation, Counselor Lamatina.
Thank you, Madam President. The Committee on Parks and Recreation and Transportation held a hearing on Monday, May 16, to discuss the city's Vision Zero plan for traffic calming measures. Commissioner Gina Fandaka from Boston Transportation Department, Michael Dennehy from Public Works, Kristin McGosh, the Office of Disabilities Commission, Chris Osgood, Chief for Streets, as well as other representatives from Public Works, Boston Transportation Department, Walk Boston. They provided the council with an update on their plans to incorporate new technologies to help address crashes among motor vehicles and bikes, as well as several fatalities that occurred in 2015. We found out that the city saw 22 fatalities last year, nine involving pedestrians, three involving bikes, and 11 involving cars. I'll let the main maker, Matt O'Malley, discuss some of the things that they're going to be doing, but the plan is going to address some priority corridors. They're going to focus Tabit Triangle in Dorchester, Stony Brook in Jamaica Plain, as well as Mass App. Something that I'm really glad to see that they can look at some other tools, speed humps. The previous administration never wanted to talk about speed humps, and they're talking about speed humps this time, so I'm looking forward to that. I've been a strong advocate for that for many, many years. So they're going to come back and talk to the council with some other updates, but Counselor Matt O'Malley, I want to thank you for bringing this to our attention, and you have the floor. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Lamatina. Counselor O'Malley.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you Chairman Lamatina for that terrific overview. Thank you, of course, to my cosponsor on this, Counselor Andrea Campbell. And virtually every one of you came to this very, very important hearing. There were 23 fatalities in 2015 in this city. Nine were pedestrians that were struck by cars, three were cyclists, and 11 were motor vehicle accidents or crashes which resulted in death. Sadly, we've actually seen an uptick just now that we're on trend to surpass that in 2016, but the mayor's goal that we all share is to get that 23 number to zero within the next 15 years. And there are tools that we have at our disposal that didn't exist before. So I think first, designating priority quarters in Jamaica Plain, in Dorchester, and other parts, and obviously they will spread to every nook and cranny of this great city, looking at things such as solar-powered speed light, uh, speed display boards, look at certain bump outs, look at raised crosswalks, all of these issues working in concert is what we need to do. I want to give special acknowledgement to the good folks from Walk Boston who have been working on this for longer than most of us have been alive. And, you know, it was four years ago where I did a hearing with many of you on new traffic calming measures and said that we wanted to make the term "Boston Driver" synonymous with safety and civility, and we are seeing things happening that, towards that end, but there's still a lot of work that we need to do. So it was great to check in with these folks. Counselor Campbell and I would ask that the Chair allow this matter to remain in committee so that we can check in again. The one takeaway that I hope, it's great to see this concerted effort, to see this inter-agency cooperation to address these, use these new tools, but really, we can't wait any longer. This is something that has unanimous political support. People in the neighborhoods want to see it. We all hear time and time again, at civic associations, or neighborhood watches, or community groups. So anything we can do, we have seen an increase in their budget, hope that will continue. This was a very important step to have this hearing, and I look forward to seeing the fruits of this shared collaboration come true. So thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Counselor Campbell. Thank you, all of you, for your participation in this very important issue.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Would the cosponsor like, okay. Docket number 0509 will remain in the Committee on Parks, Recreation and Transportation. Motion, orders, and resolutions, Madam Clerk.
Docket number 0743, Counselor Campbell offered the following order to suspend Rule 34 of the 2016-2017 rules of the Boston City Council, Public Safety and Criminal Justice, on docket number 356.
Chair recognizes Counselor Campbell.
I stand again to now talk about Rule 34. So I stand to request that Rule 34 be suspended to allow us to have a hearing, a follow-up hearing, on the issue of the Body worn Cameras, the Pilot Program, on June 8 at 3 o'clock. We previously had this hearing on May 3, but due to funerals and wakes of officers that week, we did a shortened hearing. So this is a follow-up one, and why we chose this particular date was to allow for the Commissioner to come, and we were accommodating his schedule, understanding that Rule 34 is, I don't take suspending it lightly, so this is an exception, and I appreciate if my colleagues will allow me to make that exception to accommodate the schedule of the Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Campbell. Anyone like to speak on this matter? Okay, so Counselor Campbell moves for suspension of Rule 33 to allow us to vote on the suspension of Rule 34 to address this the same day and to make that Wednesday hearing happen. All those in favor of docket 0743's passage say aye. Any opposed say nay. Docket 0743 has passed.
Docket number 0744, Counselors Linehan and Lamatina offer the following order for hearing regarding water transportation in the city of Boston.
Counselor Lamatina, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, it's time that the city, all of us, have a serious conversation about water transportation. I was hoping last year we would have this hearing because there's two ferries that, there's money in the BRA for two ferries, and it's just sitting there. What I want to do, Madam President, is get all the agencies together, get the Transportation Department together, get Mass DOT together, Mass Port, Mass DOT, BRA, all of us in the room together, and try to figure out how we get water transportation in the city of Boston. You know, just recently, I went to New York City. They have a great water transportation system over there, Baltimore. In East Boston, I could see the Seaport from Pierce Park, but I can't get there. To get there, you would have to take the blue line, to the orange line, to the green line, to the red line, and from the red line, you have to take a bus to get to Seaport. Also, as you know, my district, East Boston, Charlestown, North End, District 1, it's all on the waterfront, and it would be great that people from Charlestown would be able to come to East Boston and use our beautiful Greenway, take the kids on a bike, and go to a beach. There are some folks in East Boston that don't like going to the beach, but they could go to the North End and use outdoor pool. So I think that this is an opportunity for the whole city. It would increase tourism into our neighborhoods. It would give each neighborhood an opportunity to visit other neighborhoods. With all this waterfront development taking place in the city, there has to be some money available to subsidize this ferry. I just found out recently that Mass Port, they have a ferry from Long Walk that goes to the airport, part of mitigation for the Big Dig, $1 million a year, and guess what? No one uses that ferry. So maybe we could use some of that money for a ferry in the Inner Harbor. So with that, I want to thank Counselor Linehan, my cosponsor who also has the waterfront in his district. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Lamatina. Would the cosponsor like to speak? Counselor Linehan, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate it. So Counselor Lamatina and I have discussed this issue for a long time. We had waited, as a body, we approved the federal grant that would allow it to be transferred so the BRA would have the money, and that they would get this money and use it to create a water ferry service from East Boston to South Boston. Well, we're not looking just to do that. We want to make sure that, one, that we do create that opportunity, that we utilize those funds that are up at the BRA, but also that we look at a really comprehensive network and strategy of using the waterways. Boston has expanded 40,000 people in the past five years, and probably will again another 40,000 over the next five. We're hosting Sail Boston 2017, and it's going to be one of the biggest sailing events, and they're going to use the piers in South Boston, down in the Woffe District, in Charlestown, and in East Boston for the first time, and there's no way 6 million people over a five-day period are going to be able to get around to all those locations if we don't have a more comprehensive transportation grid and system. So this is long, long overdue. When we talked about the Olympics, when we talked about any major activity coming to our city, we preface it all by saying we have this great resource, our Boston Harbor, that's totally underutilized. So we want to utilize it. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Linehan. Docket number 0744 will be assigned to the Committee on Parks, Recreation and Transportation.
Docket number 0745, Counselors Asabi George and O'Malley offer the following order for hearing regarding later high school start times in Boston public schools.
Counselor Asabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to Counselor O'Malley for partnering with me in this effort. We all know what the science shows, and the American Academy of Pediatrics has strong evidence suggesting that an early start to the school day is a critical contributor to chronic sleep deprivation among American adolescents. The research is clear that adolescents who get enough sleep have a reduced risk of being overweight or suffering depression, are less likely to be involved in automobile accidents, have better grades, and higher standardized test scores, that is what we measure our kids on too, and have a better overall quality of life. The research indicates that the average teenager in today's society has difficulty falling asleep before 11:00 p.m. and is best suited to wake at 8:00 a.m. or later. In Eastham, they started the high school start time, they pushed it back to 8:35 a.m., giving students an extra hour to sleep in. Tardiness fell by 35%, and the number of Fs and Ds dropped by half. For the good of all... fell by 35%, and the number of Fs and Ds dropped by half. For the good of all high school students in Boston, for their health, their learning experience, as well as their grades and college applications, I look forward to a robust conversation about our start times in the city of Boston, which are as early as 7:20 in the morning. I look forward to this conversation and to partnering with all of you to hear how we can best work to support our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Asabi George. Councilor O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm delighted to join my dear colleague and friend, Councilor Anissa Asabi George, in offering this hearing order. Councilor Asabi George is uniquely qualified as someone who spent 13 years as an educator in a high school, and of course, the mother of four, not quite teens, but tweens or almost tweens. So she experiences, and I know many of you, with children, with grandchildren, with nieces or nephews. I know Councilor Campbell and I had an early start school 20 or so years ago and can remember what that was like. There are 33 high schools in the city of Boston. 15 of them begin before 7:30 a.m. and 27 begin before 8:30 a.m. As we know, our schools are citywide, which means students can choose to go to a school close to their home or travel across the city. If you have an early start school and you live in West Roxbury, or Hyde Park, or East Boston, or Brighton, you know, you may have to leave your house at 6, at 6:15 a.m. I've talked to countless teachers and educators who have said the first period of the early school start day is essentially a wash because the kids are still half asleep. This is something that we really ought to change, and we've seen other cities and towns throughout the Commonwealth and throughout the country do this. Nauset High School down the Cape changed their start time to 8:15, I'm sorry, to 8:35 in 2012. Nauset Regional High School changed its start time to 8:35 a.m. and saw tardiness fall and grades rise almost immediately. We're hearing this from so many students. We're hearing this from so many parents. There's a tremendous group of parents at Boston Latin Academy who have begun the ball-rolling on this. And I think it's high time that we bring in the partners, we bring in the administration, Superintendent Chang and others, to see why we shouldn't do this. We don't provide transportation for seventh or eighth or for high school students anymore. So this wouldn't be the same constrictions that we may have with elementary school. So this is something that should be done. The Academy of Pediatrics recommends that teenagers get about nine hours of sleep per night. If a teenager has to get to school at 7:20 and has to leave their house at 6:00 or 6:15, that means they would have to go to bed at 8:30 p.m. And I can't think of any teenager that would do that. This is something that, as I said, other cities have done. It's high time Boston gets on board. The lack of sleep can cause low grades, anxiety, depression, obesity, suicidal thoughts, other things. This is not only a public health and a public safety issue, but this clearly is a very, very important education issue. Now, obviously, we have to consider other transportation patterns, the effect on individual schools and after-school activities, as well as youth employment, but we can do this by just moving back, say, a half hour, 45 minutes, an hour, depending on the case. I think we could have a real profound impact. So once again, I want to thank Councilor Asabi George. She has been talking about this long before she was elected. This has been a real passionate issue for her, one that I share, and I guess, I would venture to guess most of you do too. So looking forward to making this change. It will have a profound impact on our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor O'Malley. Councilor Presley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just rise to commend the makers. There certainly are many variables to consider here, but I think it is a worthwhile conversation. And so I do thank you for bringing it forward as a hearing order. You know, I have to say, with many of the high school-age students that we all interact with, there are some reoccurring themes. I mean, it's not just the influence of social media devices and Facebook and the like that they're on forever that does keep their brains moving, and so it is harder for them to be at rest. But it's also that many of them are working after-school jobs, contributing to their household income. Many of them are helping to care for younger siblings, including helping to get them out of the door in the morning. All of those things are impacting their time management and certainly their sleep. And so whether we're talking about greater investments in social emotional wellness supports, or improving the quality of school food, or when our students eat, like pilot programs like breakfast in the classroom, you know, all of these things, you know, work together to ensure that our students are in a headspace and in a physical well-being where they can receive what is being taught to them. This is also about making, improving the classroom atmosphere and providing teachers with more attentive students. You know, so again, you know, we can be as innovative as we want to be and create a bunch of fancy algorithms and push rigor and do all these different things and get all the money we want for the schools. But if our students are not receptive to what's being offered, it really is all in vain. So again, I really do just want to commend the makers, and I very much look forward to the hearing.
Thank you, Councilor Presley. Madam Clerk, would you please add Councilor Presley's name? Also add Councilor Linehan, Councilor Zachem, Councilor Campbell, Councilor Siomo. Please add the Chair's name. Councilor Lamatina, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just rise to commend the bow makers. This is something that should have happened a long, long time ago, especially when my daughter was going to Boston Latin. Young ladies get up early in the morning to get ready for school and so, well, yeah. But anyways, this is long overdue. I can't wait to have this discussion because I think that you'll see a lot of our students' grades improve. So this is, I just want to commend you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Lamatina. Madam Clerk, please add Councilor Lamatina's name. Councilor Jackson, you have the floor.
Madam President, I just want to commend the makers. This makes sense. It also, Boston is unique because we have citywide high schools. Most other cities and towns don't actually have a citywide high school. So I think that really underscores the point. In addition, we do not have the most, how should I put it, when it comes to the MBTA. It sometimes breaks down, Madam President, and so that is another contributor to many of our young people's tardiness. I think, again, this is common sense legislation and a change that actually comes at a really important time as things are being negotiated. We are not, we are precluded from being involved in those negotiations, but the timing actually comes at a pretty good time so that this can be raised in time to have that actually included. Please add my name, and again, I want to commend the sponsors.
Thank you, Councilor Jackson. Madam Clerk, please add Councilor Jackson's name, and please add Councilor Baker's name. Docket number 0745 will be assigned to the Committee on Education. Personnel orders, Madam Clerk.
Do I, oh, did you want to speak, Councilor Baker?
Oh, got it. It was a very quick call. It actually did not happen. So my apologies. We will review docket 0744. Madam Clerk, please add Councilor Baker's name. Would anyone else like to sign on to docket 0744 while we have reopened it? Councilor Siomo, Councilor McCarthy, please add the Chair's name. Okay. Docket 0744 again is in the Committee on Parks, Recreation, and Transportation. And now personnel orders, Madam Clerk.
Docket number 0746, Council Wu for Councilor Linehan offer the following order.
Councilor Linehan moves for suspension and passage of docket 0746. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Docket 0746 has passed.
Docket number 0747, Councilor Linehan for Councilor Wu offer the following order.
Councilor Linehan moves for suspension and passage of docket 0747. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Docket 0747 has passed.
Docket number 0748, Councilor Linehan for Councilor Wu.
Councilor Linehan moves for suspension and passage of docket 0748. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Docket 0748 has passed. There are zero late filed matters, great, in the hands of the clerk, and two late filed matters for the consent agenda. Is there any objection to adding these matters? Hearing none. Chair moves adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Consent agenda is adopted. And moving on to the green sheets, would anyone like to pull a matter from the green sheets? So at this time, I'd like to ask all guests and counselors to please rise. And today, the council will prepare to adjourn the meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Councilor Baker, Kevin Callahan and Josefa Rosa Sabater. For Councilor Siomo, Mary Jaclyn Panzica. For Councilor Lamatina, Dominic A. Coppola, Douglas Naught, Maureen Renee O'Malley, and Louis, Louis, apologies, Louis St. Gilles. For Councilors Linehan and Flaherty, Christopher Thomas. For Councilor McCarthy, David Dahlstrom. And on behalf of the council as a whole, Patricia O'Donnell, Christine O'Donnell's mom. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, we do so in memory of the aforementioned individuals, and we are scheduled to meet again Wednesday, May 25, 2016, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor of adjournment say aye. Any opposed say nay. Eyes have it, council is adjourned.